Okay, it is 6:30. I will now call to order the THPRD Board of Directors meeting for February 8th, 2020, 2023. I understand that there is a motion to amend this evening's agenda. Barbie, you are muted. I see you talking.
I promise you I hit the unmute button. We've been doing this for three years now, y'all. Yes, this is Barbie. Apologies for the bike. Yes, I would like to move that the Board of Directors amend this evening's agenda to remove item 9B, resolution naming new neighborhood park at Southwest Pointer Road.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, Alfredo, I'll second.
Thank you, Alfredo. I assume Jessica, we need to take role for this?
Yes, Heidi Edwards.
Yes.
Alfredo Moreno?
Yes.
Barbie Minor?
Yes.
Felisa Montalbenco?
Yes. Do we need to take role?
Um, no, we're fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Whoops, Felisa, you're on mute now.
It's contagious.
I'm sorry.
Collect myself. I think the next item is, action resulting from executive session. Do we have any action resulting from executive session?
Yes, this is Alfredo. I moved that the Board of Directors authorize the acquisition of land in the southwest quadrant of the district for the price discussed in executive session, subject to the standard due diligence review and approval by the general manager.
There a second?
This is Heidi. I second.
Thank you, Heidi. Jessica, will you take a role, please?
Barbie Minor?
Here. Yes.
Heidi Edwards?
Yes, yes.
Alfredo Moreno?
Yes.
Felisa Montalbenco?
Yes. Wow, it's all contagious now. What a night, y'all. Next up, we have a proclamation for Black History Month. And I'm gonna open up that. Whereas THPRD is committed to eliminating the historical inequities of systemic racism and ensuring that people of color have the opportunity to play, learn, and enjoy park and recreation facilities, programs and services, and natural areas, and?
Whereas THPRD is dedicated to removing barriers to participation and fostering an inclusive culture, and?
Whereas Black communities have made and continue to make valuable contributions in the history of our nation's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development, and?
Whereas the Black community in the United States has been the target of systematic institutional racism, discrimination, exclusion, and violence based on identity, which stands in contrast with our core values. And whereas Black History Month calls our attention to the need to recognize and lay the foundation toward actively eliminating systemic racism, racial disparities, and oppression to build a community in which we all experience a full sense of belonging and respect for human dignity, and?
Whereas the THPRD Board of Directors has affirmed addressing racial equity as a core THPRD value, and?
Whereas Black History Month is a time to celebrate the successes, to reflect upon ongoing challenges of the Black communities, and look to the future to ensure solidarity, to work to advance equity and racial justice, and cultivate inclusiveness?
Now, therefore, the Tuolleton Hills Park and Recreation District does hereby declare the month of February 2023 as Black History Month, and do urge all those in the Tuolleton Hills Park and Recreation District to support and promote this observance.
Thank you, team. And I wanted to highlight some of the wonderful work that the district has been doing to celebrate Black History Month and things that we have coming up. THPRD's Cultural Inclusion Program and the Garden Home Rec Center are hosting Beaverton-based filmmaker Drew Holly on Saturday, February 18th at 12 o'clock, as he shows his film Buffalo Soldiers Fighting on Two Fronts. Drew will be speaking to viewers and answering questions after the screening. How fancy, that's great. The story of the Buffalo Soldiers involves historical complexities like race, class, power, colonialism, and Western expansion. Youth in the district's Thrive Program are working on various arts and crafts activities and reading themed books during weekly storytime honoring Black History Month. The volunteer program is working year-round with the Beaverton Black Parent Union to develop volunteer-led life skill courses. Fantastic. Cedar Hills, Elsie Stur, Garden Home Recreation, Aloha, and Harmon Swim Centers have dedicated bulletin boards with information honoring Black History Month. Garden Home Rec Center hosted the Black History 101 Mobile Museum on January 14th, partially funded with support dollars from our cultural inclusion budget with over 180 attendees. That's awesome. I didn't know that. This national touring event was free, and patrons enjoyed both an exhibit and a lecture. Mobile Recreation Community Partners and the Communications Department participated with informational booths. Last one, Elsie Stur Center is hosting Black History Month events during February. The Stur Center is highlighting Black Americans who broke barriers and opened doors in the world of fitness by offering free specialty classes every Tuesday through the month of February. Thank you, Team THPRD, for all that amazing work. Next on the agenda is audience time. My understanding is we have not received any requests for testimony or any written testimony, so I think we are moving right along?
That's correct.
Thank you. Board time. Who would like to share things that they have been working on, things they have been attending?
I'll go ahead and jump in. So this past month, January, I can't believe it's February. Sorry, I had to think about what month we're in. This last month, I had the pleasure of joining our pension committee for a fiduciary training with Joelle from Legal Counsel with Tucker Hesse. It was very informative to understand, as a pension committee member, what our responsibilities are. And so, just as a reminder, the pension committee meets, I believe, quarterly, and it is a committee that consists of board liaison as well as THPRD staff, members from the Federation, the Union Labor Organization, as well as administration. So thank you, Joelle, if she's listening in, for the training. It was very, very helpful just to be able to understand what our role is in that committee and how we can continue to improve and do better with the work we do. So aside from that, it's been a little bit of getting out when the weather is nice, but that's my update for the day.
Thank you, Heidi. Barbie?
Sure. First things first, I would love to share just an update. I had the pleasure of attending an event last night at the wonderful new Research Center called Pitch Black, which is an event that supports and elevates Black entrepreneurs and business founders, and it's kind of a shark-take-like event. Full disclosure, my husband had the opportunity to present, so of course I was definitely biased, but I tell you what, it was an incredible evening to be in community, to be in this new beautiful theater, and to see all of the Black excellence onstage, and the timing, of course, with our naming of the proclamation and whatnot was just a really incredible evening. And I think to the point of THPRD's work with the Beaverton Black Parent Union, they also pitched. So it was just wonderful centering the community and, again, elevating those voices. Also, from a programs and events point of view, we met back in January, really excited to welcome our new members who are volunteering their time. So again, I just want to continue to show appreciation and thanks for folks who step forward and are willing to donate of their time to serve on our advisory committees. We'll be meeting again this month and talking through ideas and programming plans for the rest of the year, but more to come on that as we get together, but excited to welcome the new folks to the crew. And that's my update.
Thank you, Barbie. Alfredo?
Yeah, I just want to share what you had referenced earlier, that I was able to attend the Black History 101 Mobile Museum at Garden Home Rec Center. And you know, I think I had seen this traveling exhibition about four years earlier at Portland Community College, and it obviously continues to evolve and change. But what I was struck by was just, and what I appreciated most was how it, you know, showed that THPRD, while of course we're grounded in parks, nature, recreation, and everything that's at the core of what we do, you know, we truly are a community organization that brings people together to kind of learn and be exposed to different things. And so I think sometimes our role as a community convener is a little underrated. And so I'm really, really glad to see the staff kind of leaning into that to kind of bring, you know, exhibitions like this that kind of, that highlight a certain part of our community and allows people to be exposed to, you know, to new things and sometimes uncomfortable things, but important things, you know, there at their local rec center. So thank you all.
Thank you for sharing, Alfredo. I feel like I'm bumping into y'all at various things, which is great. I know things are just like busy and overwhelming. Pitch Black was wonderful. I, of course, have so many ideas that I want THPRD to just jump on, but that's not how we do things here, and I understand that. That's not nice. I did forward one of the pitches to Doug because one of the presenters talked about an app that she had designed focused on helping the Black and Brown community camp and engage in the outdoors, and it's really cool. And so anyways, I think there may be, may, may, may be an opportunity for the district to connect with her and learn from her brilliance and maybe a program. I don't know, just throwing out ideas. And then I'll never talk about it again. Thank you. And then I know several of us were at an event that Tia has been working really hard on around the Children's Museum, and it's just so cool, and it's so fun to see all these parents hustle and work on this project. And their setting up, their goal is to create like a food cart mobile exhibit that kiddos can interact with, which I love that idea. That's so cute. I don't know if they'll be ready in time for like Big Truck Day or another one of our events, but you know, hopefully they can. I don't know. I don't know what their geographic scope is, but anyways, I'm excited. And of course, it's so fun to see one of our peers shine and do wonderful work that's impacting the community and bring her enthusiasm and values that she brings to us and this team to others. So I know everyone's hustling and working hard, and I also can't believe it's February, and I think that's it. Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
We do indeed. This is Alfredo. I moved that the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
This is Heidi. I second.
You, Jessica.
Barbie Minor?
Yes.
Heidi Edwards?
Yes.
Alfredo Moreno?
Yes.
Felisa Montalbenco?
Thank you. Up next, we have unfinished business, comprehensive plan. Take it away, Aisha.
Thank you, everyone. I am Aisha Panis, THPRD's Deputy General Manager, and I'm joined tonight by Peter Swinton, our urban planner in the Planning Department. Tonight, we're really excited to share with you the comprehensive plan, the 2023 version, and we're asking tonight that you consider adoption of this plan. If adopted, this plan replaces our 2013 comp plan update as the district's new 20-year plan for growth. And it will also serve as the comprehensive system plan that would meet our CAPRA reaccreditation requirements. So on the next slide, we wanted to bring you up to date on what we have done since last speaking with you in December. We have worked to incorporate your feedback, and we've done that in the following ways. We've added text and an infographic to the plan's executive summary, and that's intended to more fully discuss the comp plan's relationship to the forthcoming three-to-five-year strategic plan. We've also changed the wording of the welcoming and inclusive recommendation number one from update community engagement processes to conduct periodic review of community engagement processes. We've also moved the timing of recommendation two, which is updating the district's website and registration system up to the near term from the midterm. We've expanded the plan's discussion on how the district prepares for the mid- and longer-term projects within the recommendation section, and we've clarified the discussion of climate adaptation and resiliency within the environmental stewardship goal area. So on the next slide, Peter will discuss some additional updates to our comprehensive plan.
Hi, everybody. So in addition to board feedback, staff worked to finalize the plan's analysis of the district's program offerings and solicited feedback from internal and external stakeholders. These changes entailed working with rec and aquatics and sports and inclusion program coordinators and leadership. The project team finalized the district's program and service inventory. This inventory cataloged the programs, classes, services, events, et cetera, that the district currently offers and analyzed the potential program opportunities present to better serve district patrons. Additionally, the project team asked select leadership and management staff, as well as the welcoming and inclusive committee and THPRD's Nature and Trails and Programs and Facilities Advisory Committees, to review the plan and incorporated or addressed feedback provided throughout the plan. And then finally, staff provided the City of Beaverton, the Beaverton School District, Clean Water Services, Washington County, and Metro staff the opportunity to give feedback on the draft plan and incorporated the feedback received to ensure better alignment with complementary local and regional long-range planning goals. Next slide, please. And finally, we'd like to say thank you. We've taken time on your agenda, several meetings over the past year, and we really appreciate your feedback and the guidance you provided. It's helped us shape this plan, and I hope that it's a powerful tool that we can use to implement the community's vision for the future. So that's it.
Thank you so, so much. I don't know if folks have questions. Just some quick kudos. I mean, one, I'm so proud that my name is on this. I don't know that I did much, but I'm so proud to be associated with this plan because I just see the values of the board throughout this, so that just brings tears to my eyes. And I also love that you included Janine and Just Breet. I feel like they worked really hard on this when they were in their position, so it's just really fun to see their names and remember their contributions. So yeah, no, this is great. Love it. I'm gonna hand it out to people. So any questions for my peers? Otherwise, I think we are looking for a motion. Do we need a motion? I'm looking at all my different documents that I have open.
Yes, please. A motion to adopt would be great.
Someone like to do that?
This is Barbie. I can jump in.
Thank you.
I moved that the Board of Directors adopt the 2023 Comprehensive Plan.
This is Heidi. I second.
Jessica.
Alfredo Moreno?
Yes.
Heidi Edwards?
Yes.
Barbie Minor?
You bet.
Felisa Montalbenco?
Yes, enthusiastically. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could, Felisa, I'd really like to.
No, Doug.
Yeah, no, no. All good. Aisha's work in this process, you know, obviously Peter and staff, a great deal of effort, a lot of touch points, you know, back and forth. And I appreciate the board's not just tolerance, but engagement in this process because, you know, it's kind of one of those works in motion where getting your feedback helps push into other areas into the comp plan. And this is, you know, this is a critical tool as we launch forward for the park district. So thank you to everyone for it.
Thank you for being the captain of the ship, Doug. Next up, we have general manager's report.
All right. I think Holly's gonna do some intros.
Fantastic.
Good evening, board members. My name is Holly Thompson, and I'm your communications director. It is my pleasure this evening to present to you and welcome someone that you know well in a very new role for the district. Lulu Ballasteros recently competed and was selected as the district's first Equity and Engagement Manager. Yeah. We are so happy to see Lulu in this new role. And I am also standing in for Karen Madsen, who, if you know Karen, she has laryngitis and can't speak this evening. So imagine all of Karen's energy trapped without a voice. Karen is also in a new role. In the Class Comp Study, we identified Karen's position as being better placed in supervision. So she is now our community events supervisor. So I will do my best to represent for Karen. But it is my pleasure to kick this presentation off and to share a little bit about the work Lulu and Karen are leading for the district among many other people. And this work is done in cooperation with the rec division and many staff throughout the rec division that you will hear about through tonight's presentation. As you know, we've been very intentional on our approach to community events, really trying to shift our approach to being more about working in partnership in lockstep with cultural groups, with community-based organizations to co-produce events. For us, that means working in conjunction with these groups from the dream stage, the idea stage, to the figuring out how to do it stage, every step of the way, so that the events that we are so privileged to bring to the community are truly reflective and designed and built by the communities that we're trying to serve. So with that, Lulu, please take it away.
Good evening, everybody. Lulu Ballasteros, Equity and Engagement Manager.
Next slide, please.
Yes. So cultural inclusion events. So as Holly was saying, these partnerships are through co-produce events and activities. It looks like sponsorships or support to CBOs, maybe community-led projects. They vary. It's also very important, I think, to highlight that THPRD has maintained existing partnerships, but we've also connected with new groups and CBOs. We have so many examples to share. We're gonna select two for tonight. We have a new partnership this year with the Oregon Chinese Coalition alongside with the Hope Chinese Charter School. They are organizing and co-producing with us a spring Chinese festival event to be held on Saturday, May 6th at the Jenkins Estate. Planning is underway. It will include dance, musical performances, art showcases, vendors, food, public outreach, and education. We hope to make this an annual event that will grow to a full weekend of festivities. In partners, in THPRD, we have been talking, we want to add more CBOs to this same event. Another great example is the Tianqistli or Tiangis. It's a cultural market. It's the second year that we will be hosting this and co-producing. It will be held July 15th at Shifler Park. Highlights, we will have vendors, arts and craft, dance, music, family activities, and food. So there's many upcoming events and activities. I would say keep an eye on the district calendar to keep up with everything that's coming up. On the next slide, please. So we have, in cultural inclusion, we have also activities. So co-production is not only for one-day events. It can go beyond that. So it can look like an ongoing project. Let's say we have an upcoming Mayan art exhibition happening soon in a THPRD center. It could be a class or a workshop. We have a copal in clay workshop with a group called Corazon, also happening at a THPRD center. Or, as we were mentioning before, Buffalo Soldiers, we have a screening that's happening on February 18th. The list goes on and on. In our next slide, Holly will share about community events.
So on this slide, you can see that we have a long history of working with many organizations throughout the community on community events. You're very familiar with the cider mill fest, the events we do around Veterans Day, Memorial Day, activities that we do with the City of Beaverton around July 4th. And what we really wanted to highlight is we are maintaining those wonderful community events where we can. We're trying to add elements of cultural inclusion in them and spark new partnerships. And working with the team on the concept of co-production, it was really enlightening when we unpacked that and we realized we've been co-producing events for many years, but this was a method that needed to be applied in a very intentional way to really invite the community, seed community organizations through grants that we're able to provide, through dollars that we're able to direct from our DEI budget within cultural inclusion. So we just wanted to send a message that we are continuing to do the amazing, great events that we've done in the past, add these elements to it, and to just make that co-production roll forward in new ways. Next slide, please.
So centers and programs. As Holly was saying, we're being very intentional with this work by looking for new avenues to best connect the partners that we're meeting with centers and programs. So as we navigate the CBOs and partner requests to participate, we have been sharing these opportunities with those centers and programs for them to co-produce activities, to nurture new partnerships, or just bring in new partners and activities to their spaces. And of course, also, centers and programs have their own ongoing partnerships and connections. They're also nurturing new partnerships. A few examples of what has been going on, and it has been very exciting at different centers. We just had the Taiko Drums. It was a concert by Takumi Kato. This was led by Katie Hirota, a staff member from the Elsie Stur Center. She brought this magnificent artist to Garden Home in Cedar Hills. We also just heard about the Black History 101 Mobile Museum that was led by Rita Salmo from the Tennis Center. She brought it to Garden Home, and of course, we know Marjaba and many other wonderful projects that she leads. We also have the Black and Green Fellowship with Hannah Dorhofer. That's a great example of what a community-led program is. So it's led by the Beaverton Black Parent Union, and in that case, Hannah is their connection and champion with the Nature Center. And we have many more. Dia de los Niños with Cynthia Rodriguez at Garden Home, Cedar Hills with Denise. The list goes on and on. This is a great moment to just add to all the board members. As you're out and about, working with the community, meeting new partners, please keep sharing with Doug and with us. We would love to hear about these new partnerships that might be possible for THPRD.
In our next slide.
Thank you. And I just really, before we move on to welcoming week, I really want to underscore what amazing staff we have throughout the entire organization, particularly on the Recreation Division. You know, it's a real privilege that Lulu and I get to be here talking with you tonight, but we're honestly sharing a lot of work that many people, many hands are doing throughout the district. And one thing that it's so important about Lulu's position is the navigation that she's able to do. And we've put internal systems in place. You know, we have channels on Teams. We have regular meetings with staff throughout the district. So we're constantly sharing and pipelining information. Who are we talking to? What opportunities have we heard? What groups are interested in a space on what date, and what center can partner and make that happen? And so it really works organically now across the district. There are no boundaries. There are no hard barriers at our division lines. We're really trying to understand the community asks as they come in and land that with the location, the home for that event or that activity that makes the most sense across the district. So truly, lots of faces should be up here getting accolades because it's happening throughout the organization. Another thing we want to highlight is our active participation in welcoming week. We have mentioned before, last year was the first year that we stepped out of the City of Beaverton's umbrella and became a national welcoming week partner ourselves. We did that because we wanted to make a commitment to make welcoming week happen district-wide. We wanted to make sure that we had activities in every center, and our amazing Thrive staff, led by Anne Johnson, made that happen. So kiddos were doing welcoming week activities. We had displays in all of the centers. We had eight. We had displays in all of the centers. We had eight activities happening across the district, many of those in partnership with small cultural-based organizations, as we said. And we continue to use it as a strategy to seed those organizations to help give them a little bit of support and invite a space so that they can make their events and their activities happen. And again, we just want to underscore how important it is for us to live our values and say to immigrant and refugee communities, you are welcome here. This is your home. We are so happy you are here now. And some of those firsthand stories we heard at welcoming week events, there were people that were literally, it was their first month in the United States. And this event made them feel safe and included. And what more do you need to hear to feel like your work is worthwhile? Next slide, please.
And we wanted to provide a recap. Twenty-two, twenty-three. We had a total of 20 culturally specific events and activities. We had 40 culturally specific partnerships and sponsorships. And from those 20 culturally specific events and activities, 19 were co-led and co-produced. On our next slide. And what we just shared are ongoing and new partnerships. We have 11 ongoing partnerships. That means that these are partners that keep coming back for different activities and in different ways, we're nurturing those partnerships. And we have 14 new partners that you will see in upcoming activities and events, events around THPRD. It's also important to just share what might be obvious. We always make the most of these activities, meaning when we have something going on, we always try to connect and navigate other THPRD opportunities like programming, financial aid, Centro Bienvenida, come join our spaces, ways to participate, volunteering, et cetera. So it's access to service. And just this morning, Holly and I regretted that we didn't add one final slide with all the partners that we have, the obvious. We should have added that here, but next time you will see that slide there with all those wonderful names and organizations.
Yeah, and I really just thank you, Lulu. I'm so happy you made the final point about we really look at these as not transactional, right? We're not just trying to do an event with a group and move on. We really are building, nurturing and sustaining meaningful relationships so that as we have the privilege to work with these groups, we are trying to learn how they want to recreate, connect them with innovative programming ideas and constantly work to make their access to THPRD services grow. So it really is good approach that we're taking. I do want to acknowledge, it also takes a lot more work. So you know, the numbers might be, whoa, that seems like the same number of events we had before. I don't see a huge number of events increasing. The relational aspects of co-production add many more tasks and much more work to the work, but the work gets done in such a more meaningful way that we just couldn't be more pleased that we're doing it this way. So that's it. That's what we've got for you tonight and we're happy to answer any questions or, or hear anything you have to say.
Wonderful. Awesome. I think you're doing plenty of events. I feel like I can't even keep track. There's so many of us. Like what a privilege. That's amazing. Go ahead, Barbie.
I just want to echo Feliz for what you were beginning to say. I think it's just obvious from my point of view anyways, that we're not checking boxes, that you're bringing to this work a commitment. When we talk about fostering community and building community, that can't be transactional, right? And so I think this approach and the dedication to move past checking boxes to say, well, we did this event and you're saying, not only are we going to do this event, but let's think even bigger and how can we make these connections so that we can continue to just grow and build? I'm just blown away by this work and, and the commitment to hear from us as the board to say, these are the values, but how does that actually come to life? Y'all are on the front lines of making that happen. Y'all are on the front lines of reaching out to these organizations and taking on the extra work to ensure that it does feel culturally relevant, so that it truly does feel inclusive and welcomed. So I could wax on all night, but just kudos, congrats. And Lulu, I am so stoked for you and eager to see you in this position to bring your energy and expertise. We are so lucky to have you. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbie. All righto.
Of course, hopefully you all heard my, my earlier comments about the community org, you know, all of this is a huge part of that and thank you for that. Was curious just kind of about feedback you've received from, you know, community, whether it's been a awesome thumbs up, which I'm sure has been the the majority of it, or I mean, have you also received some feedback that says, hey, I miss my old event or hey, you all are too focused here. I mean, is any of that?
Lulu, if you want to weigh in, I would love to hear what you have to say about this. I think the answer is 99.9% overwhelmingly positive. People love the direction. The partners that we're working with really appreciate the direction. The participants really are having a lot more fun at these events. You know, I remember the days, and I've, you know, I've got gray hair, so I remember the days when government put up an event targeted to a community, didn't work directly with the community and didn't understand why people didn't love the event. Or, you know, they weren't, we weren't aware of how culturally unrelevant we were, right? So this approach is so much better. In terms of missing old events, there are people who still say, griffin in the grass, party in the park. We hear those. It's hard to, for me to want to go back to a model where we do some big giant event like that because it takes so much of our budget and it diminishes our ability. It's really a trade-off. You can choose one giant event like that, or you could do 15 other events that are really awesome. So we're making the decision to do more, to spread them out. We're targeting to make them kind of smaller bite sizes. And I think it's really paying off. And again, it's 99.9% positive. But we do talk about this when we think about summer. It's why we've kept the summer concert series going. But then we look at how do we add more cultural elements to that? How do we make the musical selection, the talent selection more reflective of the community as a whole? So we're trying to get the best of both worlds. Lulu, I don't, I don't know if there's anything you want to add.
I'm gonna piggyback on that. You just said it perfectly.
Yeah, no, that's great. And I, I sure appreciate that. And then I, my final comment would be just because I'm working on this during, during my day jobs, I would be curious just about like what sort of you know, data or, you know, things that you're, you know, the quantitative, you know, info about, you know, the events, but also the partnerships and satisfaction and all of that. That's something I can, I can visit with y'all offline about, but yeah, just kind of exploring that. So we can see some of the, as, as this new strategy kind of layers of more of the neighborhood events and the smaller events, I would just love to see some of the, if, if there's some, you know, if there's some quantitative touchpoints we have that we can say, hey, look, here's, here's where we were. So that's it. Awesome.
Yeah. Feels like the Lulu Fan Club and I'm here for it. This is great. It's so exciting. I love it all. You know, I, whatever thing, what everyone else has said. And I, you know, as someone who's always worked in the nonprofit sector, and so I know a lot of these are CBOs that are small and scrappy and some of them, you know, were developed during the pandemic as a direct result of their population not being prioritized. I just, I, I love the intention. I love the thoughtfulness. Like, I mean, I, I think a lot about the ripple effects of our work, the things that you can't collect and just like what it means to increase the capacity of that organization is really amazing. Because you're lending skills, you're lending expertise and relationships and you can't quantify that necessarily. But, you know, it, you know, we could think about like, well, where would these organizations be in five years as they've developed these skills with y'all's help? Which is great. And they're gonna get bigger and better in the ways that they want to, right? And forget us. That's fine. It's their journey. And I also just want to highlight kind of what Holly was saying because I don't think it was this set of board members that really talked about, you know, doing one giant event in the summer as an example, like that isn't serving our community as well as we want it to. The geographic scope of our district, the size of our district is much better served with smaller events geographically targeted. So I, I mean, I think we made the right decision there. I think it makes perfect sense for how we're growing our priorities and values as an organization. So love all of this. Keep it up. Thank you. Heidi.
Feliz, if I could, I want to say one thing to what you said, which is, you know, you, we were talking about our knowledge transfer and what, what we're able to provide the partners that we work with. And while that's true, it goes both ways. It really goes both ways. And you know, one of the things I want to say is we're government, so we have systemic barriers, right? Like our equity statement that, that the board adopted. We, we're about removing systemic barriers. And I want to give credit to our finance department because we have to go through contracting processes and our standard contracting process was too cumbersome. So we were able to create a specific community-based partnership agreement that cut through 90% of the red tape we had to do in a traditional contracting process. So while we're also skill-building and having to share maybe some regulatory things that we have to deal with, safety, health planning, other aspects, we're also getting a lot of knowledge about how to change our business practices to make us better partners in the future. We're also learning a lot of cultural agility and, and better service delivery. So it is a beautiful, beautiful, shared learning experience.
You know, one of the number one things I hear about, and you, I'm sure you hear about too, is these CBOs and like organizations that, you know, don't have nonprofit status, which is fine. It's a problematic model in the first place. The, the contracting is such a bear, it's confusing. It's, it's silly sometimes. And so I'm already thinking like you guys need to present at like League of Cities or something because that would be really, really helpful to jurisdictions across the state, if not the country. So I would love to see that personally. But that's awesome. And again, ripple effects. I love it. Heidi, sorry.
No, that's great. And I mean, this is all really important conversation and, and the kudos all the way around. I'm sad that Karen's not here tonight. Super excited for both Lulu and Karen. I've seen you at work and in action and I'm always so impressed. And I just want to give a shout out for Karen too. It does not surprise me that she has laryngitis. For seeing her and her energy at events. And I know I've had conversations with Karen at, at different events. And as an event planner myself, I'm always in awe of the work that is done because it is so multifaceted with the hundreds and hundreds of people that we are serving right now in so many different ways. So I'm just very impressive. And this is coming from a volunteer, former volunteer coordinator, an event planner, somebody who has to contract with folks. Like it's, it's a lot of work. So good, good work and congratulations both to you, Lulu and Karen. Feel better, Karen.
Okay. Great work. Thank you, thank you. Keep it up and we will try to keep tracking all these amazing events. Doug, is there more on the general managers' report? Doug is shaking his head no, but he is muted. So I'm gonna go with SDCs.
Yep, Gary's got it.
I can read his thoughts, y'all.
Well, good evening and thank you for having me tonight. I am Gary Keck, the planning manager for the Park District. And tonight's staff are requesting the board of directors approval of resolution number 23, 2023-02, which is amending the system development charge, five-year capital improvement plan and approving its use for developing the fiscal year 2324 budget. So next slide, please. So each year's staff, we update the five-year STC capital improvement plan and we reevaluate the fiscal year project list. And the reason to complete the annual update is to ensure that the district's finance staff have accurate and up-to-date information as they develop the next fiscal year's budget. Second, it gives us the opportunity to remove or add new projects so that the district is well-positioned to take advantage of any, any STC eligible opportunities that may arise, like a grant that we might know about that's coming up. And then third, we update the plan to align the project list with current available STC funds and our future revenue forecasts and to ensure that staff's workload has the capacity to take on and complete the projects. So next slide, please. So within the, the STC five-year list, you'll notice that the district shows three phases for each project. So when you, when you see a project name in the list, you'll see it come up three times. And then the first, the first phase that we show is the concept planning. And this is the phase that includes the majority of the public engagement and it helps us create the preferred concept plan. And this phase generally takes, you know, nine to 12 months on a typical neighborhood park. And then the second phase you see in the list would be the design and permitting phase. And this is where we refine that design and we go through our land use process with our local jurisdictions. And this is where we create our construction documents and our, get our construction documents put together and get the, the building permits. And this phase can take anywhere from, you know, 18 to 20 months, depending on the permitting requirements. And then the last phase you'll see on the list for each project is the construction phase, which takes a good, you know, six to eight months. So the reason we've been showing the phasing in the STC five-year capital improvement list is to be more transparent to the public. It shows the stage of development that we anticipate being in each year. So next slide, please. So the proposed five-year STC list includes several general updates. The first is adding or removing projects. We have two new projects, including a STC development project with the developer in South Cooper Mountain that we added. We also added a new, the new, the planning project for the facility functional plan, which came out of the comp plan, which you all adopted tonight. And we've also removed a few projects from the list from last year. One of the projects we removed was the EDA grant. That was that big $5 million grant that we went after this last fiscal year for the H&amp;T complex improvements. We were not successful in getting that project, so we're taking it off the list. And the other two projects that we took off the list, and these two, we didn't take off the entire STC list. We just pushed them down beyond the five years because they were two projects that we don't yet have property for. We had anticipated maybe having the property in hand in the next five years, but we can't guarantee that. So we shifted them down for now. So they're still on the 20-year list, just not in the next five years. And another update was adding the, the fifth year to this year, which was the fiscal year 2728. So we've got a full five-year look ahead. We also added in the affordable housing waivers this year up to the cap that the boards approved. And that's going to help us more accurately, more accurately forecast revenue available. So that's been added in there. We updated project costs to reflect the inflationary impacts that we've seen in the industry that we've talked to you about quite a bit in the last year or two. So we've updated those. And then we've also updated the revenue forecasts and we've actually used historical data, data from the last three years of what we've been collecting to help us forecast for the near future. Another update that we, that you'll notice on this one is the retirement of the Bonnie Slope West and the South Cooper Mountain overlay areas where the most recent STC methodology update removed that requirement where we had to spend a percentage of SCCs collected in these two areas in that area. So we decided to take that off several years ago. So we're updating the list to show that. And the last update is like I mentioned, the refinement of the anticipated project sequencing. And this is, a lot of this is reflective of what our certain staff capacity has. We've got a bunch of projects coming in from the 2019 Metro Bond, the local share, which has moved on to our project list. So our staff are starting to work on those. We have four of those projects. And then, as you all know, we were recently awarded a couple of pretty big trail projects and grants. which our staff will be working on those as well. So we've shifted down some SDC work to accommodate that. So next slide. Yeah, thank you. So as mentioned earlier, staff are seeking Board's, the Board of Director's approval of the Resolution 2023-02. And it's amending this SDC Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan list, and then approving us to use it for developing the 2324 budget. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions? Gary, you provided great detail, very clear. So thank you. Do I have a motion? I feel like people are trying to go off, trying to unmute themselves.
I can make a motion. I, I would move that the Board of Directors approve Resolution Number 2023-02, amending the district's five-year SDC CIP and approving its use in developing the fiscal year 2023-24 budget.
This is Barbie. I'll second.
Thank you. Jessica?
Heidi Edward?
Yes.
Barbie Minor?
Yes.
Alfredo Moreno?
Yes.
Feliz de Montblico?
Yes.
I think that wraps us up for the evening. Slightly chaotic, but we got through it. Appreciate everyone's energy and time. And have a lovely rest of your evening. Take care.
Thanks.